Of the willing. And I think if we could come out of tonight with some of our points, main talking points that we want to communicate out to the city of the benefits of community power, that would be good. As well as talking about the work in Stephanie's excellent plan that she gave us and maybe how we task out some of this. So I think if we do those things, that would fill up the time that we have. I know Peter Somsich and I both need to go to the Ward Three Neighborhood Forum at 6:30 over in the senior center. So Stephanie, thank you for this. This is terrific.
Good job.
It's well thought out and it's a great plan. I think I'll just also note that as Kevin sent us a lot of material, the first flight of towns are putting their applications into the PUC. The Community Power Coalition has secured, is in the process of securing their key vendors to manage the energy portfolio, build it and manage it, to handle all the service to customers. And you are about to start the proposal process for a search firm for a CEO. The CEO is due to be hired early in January?
Probably between January and March.
Okay.
Yeah.
And, and of course, the big news, which was on most of the newspapers, is that the PUC did approve all of the community power rules. So it's real. It's getting real very fast. And the capacity that the coalition is building is exciting to watch. So we've got a timeline to go out into the community in late in the year with some surveys to gauge interest in the green power parts of the menu of options and get community feedback on the services to provide. And then finish our energy aggregation plan in the first quarter with a goal to have it approved by the council next year in the spring and be going out to the community over the summer to roll the program out. If I got that right on your timeline, Kevin?
We would, we would submit it to the PUC and the other state groups for approval in April.
Right.
They then have 60 days. Chances are they turn it around quicker because there's earlier communities that have already submitted their EAP and we will mirror that. And then at that point in time, once they approve it, we are then able to get the detailed data from the utilities around our, all the data sets around all of our customers. But then the real timing is 45 days before launch.
Right.
There's a milestone. So if, and it's up in the air whether when Phase Two would be or it would be a rolling, but say it was October 1, 45 days would be then the middle of August.
Right.
And then during the month of September would be the 30-day notification opt-out, opt-out window.
Right.
So, you know, things would get serious in terms of those, backing up those milestones. So, you know, all of our communication will lead, lead up to that.
So that's when we really have a lot of communication back and forth with residents in that rollout. But that's all, I mean, that's a path that many communities have walked. It's, it's a familiar path. There's a series of steps to go through.
I think I got those dates right, Henry, didn't I?
That sounded right to me.
Yeah. It all gears off when is the, the window. If it's October 1st, it's 45 days before. If it's November 1st, it's 45 days before. Those, those are the regulatory requirements.
Right.
And that's the, so it's a 45-day notice to the utility to say we are commencing service and that will be soon after their price-to-beat rates are known. So then you can procure in that window and, or finalize your procurement in that window and then notify the customers 30 days before commencing service.
Right. Right. So at our last meeting, we, we took some time to craft our goals for the program. And I think now our task is to prepare the residents of Portsmouth for what is this? What's it, what's in it for me? And how will it affect my energy choices? And how does this all work? So we had the information event in June that I think was pretty successful. And, and then Stephanie went to work on this sort of comprehensive communication plan. So off the top, before we get into some of our message and crafting our message, just input and thoughts you had after reading this from any of you. I thought it was.
Yeah, well put. Well, yeah, I, I thought it was very comprehensive, very detailed and seems to be identifying all the ways we can communicate. So I thought it was very well done. And it's amazing how many different options we might have to, to communicate. Yeah. So I think Stephanie, you did a good job with that and it's a, it's a good, I, I think maybe we need to kind of look into some more of the details of whether or not in some cases this might be redundant or, or an over, overloading people with it. Timing is probably important. We don't want to hit them all with everything all at once, but if we have different, different times of the, or different months where we can identify different communications and media, that would be good. So I think, I think it's really good.
Yeah. Stephanie, any guidance for us on repetition?
Kind words. Hate being in the spotlight. It might be helpful as we talk through the specific messaging to kind of pull out the action plan at the back so that we can see what happens when.
Yeah, I think that's the heart of it.
Yep.
John?
Allison.
I just, I thought it was excellent. I just was wondering if there are any more, you know, the outreach that we could do with regard to other events that are happening in the city like the 400 celebration? Is there something that we could do there? Or, you know, Josh Evans having that October 2nd, 10 to 1 at the Bridge Street Lot? You know, I was wondering if we could just put up a little QR code, want to know about community power? You know, something like that.
Those are, yeah, anytime we can be in an event, that's good. It does require manpower in many cases.
We could partner with the Sustainability Committee because they're very interested in having some, having an event next year to draw attention to their, their concerns around the capital, not capital improvement plan, around the climate action plan that they're working on. And you could kind of set up a joint event so that you don't, you know, it's much easier to staff if you've got two full committees of people to draw from.
Yeah, that'd be great. Any idea when, you know, first quarter, second quarter?
I think they were still discussing that. Peter was in that meeting as well.
Climate Action Plan would be starting up in the winter, so it'd probably be in the late winter, I would think, January, February timeframe.
Okay. That's good. That's a great time for awareness.
So I, I think we have a lot of the messaging, you know, we've articulated the benefits of, of community power in different forums and our FAQs and everything. So I think we have a reservoir of the messaging in pretty decent shape. It's just kind of reiterating it in different, in different ways. And from my long ago corporate life, they always said, well, you had to like deliver something seven times or 13 times or something.
Repetition is good.
Good comment. But so, you know, I do think the more, more the merrier. And if people feel they're educated on this, they'll, will maybe stop listening a little bit. If they're not, they'll continue. And, you know, we're fortunate in a city like this with all the resources available and the tools to, you know, leverage, leverage those. The one thing from a, maybe, maybe from a content standpoint, between now and first wave launch, we might want to like temper the, you know, this is a potential that we're actively investigating and, and, you know, excited about. And then once there's a successful go-live, I think we can kind of flip the switch into a more concrete, you know, messaging that this is, you know, very viable, it's proven and we're getting on board. We're going to be a fast follower here to the communities that went first. But we might want to be a little careful in, you know, overpromising between now and next April, May, because that's one of the reasons, you know, we're kind of going second is to, you know, make sure this is a proven, a proven commodity. So just, I think there's probably a subtle, like little flavor to the first wave of communications between now and spring and then from go-live to when we go live, kind of pedal to the metal type of thing, you know?
Well, that's why I liked your elevator speech, because I thought you were just providing information about it without too many promises.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, yeah.
And the, the thing that, that Henry pointed out in the plan is that there are the basic informational resources with the Community Power Coalition. So I think if we start sharing those as a what is this, as we started to do with the January, with the June event, then there's a more educated base to build on what does this mean for Portsmouth. And I, I think we had this conversation the last time, but I, it's worth saying again, we do have a survey, a community survey in December. And I have always found it more effective to survey a, a, a community that has a little bit of education than a blank slate, because once people take a position on something that they don't know about, which they're nervous that they don't know about it, then they become, they embrace that position. And it's much harder to move them than if you start with a little bit of information and then do a survey about the information you've given them and then move to the next step, that, that helps.
And I also think right now, there's such a focus on price that we might put a little more emphasis on price, and, and I don't mean to be a naysayer, but a little less on the green and the climate side of it, because I think folks are, are very, very attuned to price right now and would be excited about the city exploring opportunities to help manage price. So, I mean, if I, if I was doing like a 60-40 right now, I'd be 60% price, 40% green. Just, I think that's, I think it'll resonate more with more people between now and the end of the winter when people are going to be getting hammered about price. You know, they'll, they'll think if we're, you know, the, the, the green side of it, even though it's becoming much more financially viable, that that'll only tack on more cost to what they're already paying, you know?
I, I like your balance of 60-40 because I was really surprised, very happily surprised with the results of our, our on-the-spot surveying in June, that so much of the audience was already on board with the, yeah, I'll spend more money to get green. That was June.
That was before the August rates.
But still, but I, I do think the news hook is related to pricing, particularly since the, the, the idea that the governor floated about giving everybody a break, break on our electric bills did not happen. And it's that the people who are eligible to qualify for energy assistance programs will get that benefit for heat and electricity, but not across the board. So that's, the news hook is price. I agree with you. But 60-40 balance.
Yeah, I would just like to add something that you just said a little bit nuanced a bit, because while it is true that people might be focused very much on price because we hear of these price increases, it's also true that we see how volatile fuel prices are and that this is a world problem, you know, with the Ukrainian war and other worldwide issues. Fuel prices are very volatile and if we can get some kind of stability and reduce the volatility of those prices for Portsmouth residents, for example, that would, that would dampen that danger, because you can go with low, I mean, natural gas two years ago was cheap. So if you just went for the cheap and you wanted to stick with that and you think that's going to help you, it's not, because if worldwide prices go up, so will your pricing. So grouping together to a group to ladder or strategically buy the, your fuel in a way that provides you less volatility for your, more stability and predictability. I think people actually, I think they really benefit, or think more of reliability and dependability that they can count on is maybe more important than just the raw price, because if I know I can budget for that, I know this is how much it is, it's much easier to get by there. And at the same time, the, the green power actually has the potential for becoming cheaper as fossil fuels become more volatile. And a good example of that is if you go onto the PUC website right now, you can get, you can get all 100% green power for two years at only 20 cents instead of 22 cents. And it's all green for two years. Now, people might say, oh, maybe in two years it'll be cheaper, maybe, maybe not, maybe more expensive. We don't know. That's a, that's a bet we have to take. But if we do it collectively as a group, that risk is mitigated because we can take other measures as well.
Right.
The one thing I just, is that I have a little bit of agenda over is this, from a coalition perspective, is this investigation that the PUC has, has launched as a result of the high prices, that, I mean, they're hamstringing the utility now in terms of only having to procure power within a.
Six months.
Well, for six months, but they have to go out to bid just in a very narrow window. And this year, they had to go out to bid in a window that where the rights, the rates were crazy. So, so then the residents of New Hampshire suffer for the next six months because of that regulation. And the PUC investigation that was just launched on September 6th is saying they want to investigate how the utilities are, or not that they want to investigate, they're directing the utilities, but they want to revisit that because they know it's archaic, I think, and it's, it's hamstringing the utilities. The utilities certainly can do portfolio management around energy. It's what they do. I mean, this, the coalition hasn't found some cure for, you know, something fancy that doesn't exist, that utilities can't do it now. So there, I'd be shocked if the PUC doesn't come back and ask the utilities to procure default service in a different manner. They're really sticking it to the residents of New Hampshire right now based upon the way that they do it. And, and the other thing they're asking is that the utilities, that they want to investigate regional procurement. So you have these large utilities that go across multiple states. They only procure today by state. So Eversource, you know, they'll, they'll send out, they have a procurement for New Hampshire, for Massachusetts, for Connecticut. I mean, the, the benefit of these large utilities is, is scale. And, you know, I'd again be surprised that there wouldn't, there's not some effort for regional procurement of energy by these utilities that operate across state lines. Maybe that's a little more far-fetched because they'd have to get Connecticut and Massachusetts on board. But the notion of the PUC saying, we want the utilities to do more of a portfolio management approach to energy procurement to benefit New Hampshire residents, I, if I was a betting person, and I'm not, that's going to be a change.
Yeah.
And that will have a profound impact on the business model of the coalition, because that's what the coalition is hanging their hat on in terms of their competitive advantage and how they can deliver stable rates, is they're going to have a, a portfolio approach to procuring power. And they're saying, we can beat the utilities because they're, they're doing it in a dumb way. But then they point to the co-op, which doesn't have to follow that rule, and the co-op has much more stable rates. So I'm just, I, as a group here, just be cognizant of this. Right now, it's just an investigation, so there's not going to be any decision coming out of it, but, and it, you know, things move slow, but I wouldn't be surprised over the next year or so that we see some substantive changes in terms of how the utilities are asked to procure default service.
To, to be honest, I would be surprised if they do make a change.
You do.
Because this is a political movement. Right now, they have to show that they're doing something. But like you said.
But why wouldn't they do it, though? Why, why do they?
Well, there's always interests who like the status quo. And it, you know, the utility's going to start saying, oh, my gosh, if we change all this, you know how much more that's going to cost us and that's going to go on there? We're going to, we're going to ask you guys to reimburse us for all the changes we have to make. And, you know, if you get rid of that, that procurement window, because that is all by PUC decree, there would be, there's going to be other opportunities for changes that some people might want, some people might not want. So, so I think that if we, if you think we're going to get any change within a year, I think you're very optimistic. Maybe two years. And, but I, I can see it's a good idea. However, I just don't think that it's a serious attempt, you know, when they say they're investigating. They know what they was going. It was going on all the time. Everyone was happy with it.
TBD.
It was during 20 years of sleepiness in terms of the markets. And they, they can't justify it now. They just can't.
No, but, but, you know, everybody liked it.
All the conversation here.
And let me just say one other thing. I spoke to Stephen Kaminski, who is the New Hampshire co-op, was he president, director or something like that, at the offshore wind conference yesterday. And I was talking to him about how they're doing with their pricing and everything. And he was saying, you know, the aggregation part, having a lot of customers and a lot of demand that you could go out to bid for, doesn't work as well as one thinks. You don't really get, they don't get as good a price just because they have a lot of customers. Their main key is this laddering portfolio thing that they can procure over time, just like you would like if you ladder CDs, for example, to get the best return in a stable situation. They ladder their purchases of energy this way so that instead of every six months, you know, like the utilities have to go out, they don't have to do that. They can continuously procure as they see good opportunities coming along. And, you know, if they lock in something like I locked in for myself for two years for 6.5 cents last summer, which was just a coincidence, but if you can lock in a couple of these things and when you average it out, it's going to be a better rate than what the utilities have because of their restrictions.
But that restriction's artificial.
Oh, yeah. It's, well, you know, political too, I think, because, you know, the, the utilities have, and you probably know this very well, they have embedded a couple other ish, smaller expenses, low incomes, low income subsidies, the Regi program, all this stuff. When you start changing that, that's all going to come unwrapped. And everyone's going to say, well, let's change this as well. Let's change that as well. And that's why I think if anything is going to happen, it's going to be a long process. And who knows? By that time, natural gas prices go down and they say, hey, you know, the problem went away.
Well, the minute, the minute.
I'm getting this off. But I mean, I agree with you. I just wanted to, this is, it is a real.
It is.
Regulatory, you know, open docket. And they were very clear in terms of the scope they want to review. And, and I, you know, just from my background and perspective, the utilities could turn a switch in a second and do portfolio management.
Right. So, yeah, when Kevin sent me that, I was concerned, because it could mean a big change. Henry, any insights into whether?
I, I did read the initial comments of the parties the other day, and I think, I sort of, I guess it's maybe between where the discussion has been, but Eversource and Units Hill both suggested that a multi-state procurement would not be feasible because of the complexities of trying to, the potential necessity to change laws in states to achieve that. I think there was sort of some, I learned a little bit about how there's a nuanced difference in Massachusetts and Connecticut that has gotten slightly more favorable pricing. So I think there could be some modest change over time. I don't think that it would be quickly implemented. But my, sort of my initial read of the con, of the, of the initial comments was caution in, I guess, a lack of clarity on what exactly the PUC was trying to achieve and caution in doing any kind of changes without having real serious clarity on, on what exactly they were, they were going for. So I think it could happen, but I think it would take time.
Right, yeah.
And I don't think it would be Wild West portfolio management do sort of have at it as you see fit. I think it would, there's still going to remain some form of regulated procurement, just as there is in Connecticut and Massachusetts, that might be slightly more cost-effective, but not the same free market, competitive supplier type portfolio management.
Yeah. So at the end of the day, I do feel, I felt safe looking at this, that the coalition would be the first statewide portfolio procurement. They'd be first to market with that, you know? And, and these utilities might come along in a year or two. I also looked at it and said, this is competition. You know, just as the coalition is, is becoming real, the utilities are realizing they're, they are hamstrung.
No, this wasn't the utilities. This is the regulators. Utilities could care less, because they're just, if they pay 10 cents, they pass it on for 10 cents. It's just a matter of.
I think they do want, they would like to make it lower cost if they could. They don't have a strong motivation, but it's.
Well, they're, they take a hit from a customer sat standpoint, because people view, even though it's, the default services regulate it and they're just passing it through, when rates go from 11 to 22 cents, it hits their JD power ratings, et cetera, et cetera. But, and so it's not a competitive issue. I just think they, you know, there's no rationale for why rates have to go from 11 cents on July 30th to 22 cents on August 1st. It's, it's all dictated by an archaic procurement process in the state of New Hampshire.
There's actually already been one small modification. So Units Hill just was approved for eight months of power instead of the typical six months, and it's a 26 cent rate. So it's the highest of any, but they wanted to add on a couple summer months because apparently it would have been higher if they didn't do that. So there already has been a modification in some small way. Rates were crazy.
Yeah. With all that as background, and no doubt, three months from now, there'll be new developments. But let's just walk through our schedule here. First up in October.
Can I make, can I make an overarching comment? I just, I feel like I had a thought before we, earlier, but it just.
Always Henry.
One, I think there's, I, I appreciate that there's some sort of Rye, Newcastle, some neighboring communities listed throughout this that I think we'll get to, but I do just want to note that, for example, I guess there's Exeter, Rye and Durham in the seacoast that are potentially Wave One. Then there's Portsmouth, Dover and New Market that are potentially Wave Two. Those other communities are doing a similar process to what you're doing right now in terms of public engagement planning. Specifically, I'm joining Exeter early, mid-October to have a similar type of conversation. And there has been some early discussion of what if we had some sort of regional gathering? I don't think the details of the format have been worked out, but each community may sort of individually plan public engagement. Maybe there's an opportunity to get some of the communities together. It could be, you know, formal program or agenda meeting. It could be some social component to it. I'm not sure just yet, but trying to, from that, have a, have a clear understanding of public engagement plans in each community, but also where are the regional benefits, where we can sort of have alignment and, and share resources. So that's something the coalition's thinking about.
Yeah. You mean a regional invite the public type of event or a regional just we gather to share strategy?
I think potentially, well, I was thinking the former, but I think there's room for both. I think there's like a strategy internal get-to-know-one-another and swap lessons.
Right.
And then I think, I think the idea of a multi-community, regional, public event, that's, it's an interesting idea.
Yeah, that could have some legs.
Well, isn't that what we were proposing with Rye in October?
That's the November event.
That's energy efficiency.
Although that isn't specifically the coalition. It's just an opportunity where we're sharing with Newcastle and Rye. But to that end, I do think it would be helpful, just as we've been putting out flyers about that event at things like Farmer's Market, if we can quickly put together the basics of what the coalition is all about, that is a generic piece and that may well exist that we have in time for that November event, but that we also start getting out at Farmer's Markets between now and November 3rd.
Yeah.
I mean, that flyer that went in the water bill is a really nice, you know, kind of hits, hits most of the bases, I think, pretty, pretty well.
So if we just do.
It was less on the coalition and that, it was more around community power. It was less on the coalition and that, it was more around community power.
But I think that's a good place to start.
Kind of touched on community, yeah.
Yeah. So, going into the timeline.
I think you had a comment.
Oh, no, I was just going to say, I just, the idea of getting out into the public settings like this is really important. It could even be things where we're not sharing as much information as we're doing, raising awareness, like the holiday parade in Portsmouth. What if community, Portsmouth Community Power had a float?
Float, something?
Right? And then people are like, "What is that?" You know, because there were just a lot of people there, and then they're asking questions. "What is this?" So sometimes it's just about seeing it once, thinking about it, yeah.
Halloween parade?
There you go.
Well, as everybody, anybody remember Ready Killawatt?
Oh, yeah. That was a classic.
Electric guy.
All the utilities had that for, you know, across the country.
Be fun to resurrect Portsmouth Community Power Ready Killawatt.
Okay. There's still living the pride. I don't remember it.
Yeah.
Job, right?
I think that's the Circuit Riders, maybe.
Yeah, Circuit Riders, yeah. Pretty cool.
Between the Green Man and Ready Killawatt. There's got to be green power in there.
Yeah, that's true.
I'll get a picture of him, I'll send it to you.
Henry, is there a CPC logo that has been adapted by different communities, so that we can customize it, that it's a consistent visual, but we customize it with Portsmouth?
Thank you for asking that question. There is budget for development of community-specific logos. And I think we're sort of hoping to go down that road this fall. So yes, the answer is yes. There are, Lebanon, Harrisville, and Exeter sort of piloted this adaptation of the Community Power logo. There's one logo developer that's done this. They're all aligned in certain ways, but they can be customized with a specific icon or image, or whatever the graphic you want to adapt, and the colors you want to adapt for Portsmouth. So I think it'd be great to have a little, maybe mini-workshop, or pick a couple members of the committee to say, "We're going to brainstorm some ideas to say, 'Here's what we'd like our icon to be, and I can work with you on that.'" And then we can bring that through the coalitions.
In the meantime, there's, you know, we have, Portsmouth has its logo, and the coalition has its.
Right.
So we can at least-
Which I think is what we did on the water bill.
Side by side, you know?
Yeah.
Until there's one.
So, looking at the timeline, let's just walk through it a little bit and think about the messaging. September is all but gone, but October, Stephanie, you slated, let's get some newspaper and media coverage. I think I might be the logical person to approach my former colleagues. But I do think there's a, there's a great hook, since so many, well, there's two big hooks. First, everybody's seeing huge increases in their power. So I think any editor worth his salt would say, "What, what does community power bring to the table for this?" And then, it's a regional story. So to me, it would make sense for, for the local paper to look at Sunday, when their coverage is regional, because you've got Rye as part of that coverage, Exeter's part of that coverage, and you could do a takeout story on where is community power now? And, you know, I'd be happy to go talk with Howard.
And as we were just talking about, the, the price as winter comes on, as people start actually looking at the bills that they started getting as of September 1st, that is the news hook timeliness. We also have this collaborative event in November, so an op-ed from you in the middle of October that, you know, it's, I just thought about daylight savings time, but I don't want to wait till November 4th, 1, 2, and then October.
No, I'm happy to do that.
So, yeah, I think that timing is perfect. Again, just the baseline of what is this?
Right.
And why is, why should you read this op-ed at this moment that electric prices are going up? And it's getting dark out early.
Yeah. I think, if I were going to write something, how does this land with you? Do you think it would land? Electricity prices are skyrocketing, but local communities can empower themselves to have a voice and a choice, to see if they can get more stable rates, something like that.
It seems like recently The Herald has been running something on climate or-
It's a USA Today series, yeah.
And I like the letter that you wrote. That was great.
That's nice.
And then, if, if they move ahead, if Jeff McMenamy or Ian starts writing something, I'm going to give them all of your names as committee members.
Sure.
So we ought to think about what our main talking points would be. To me, it's the local empowerment. It's cheaper. You know, this is a way to have cheaper, more stable rates, greener, and less volatile. I think that some of the backend stuff about what is portfolio management, and what is, you know, aggregation plans, and PUC, and all that, we, we know all that, but in terms of benefits to the, the little guy at the end of the street, you know, he gets a voice, he gets an easy way to be part of a, a large buying block. He gets to choose green power if, if he wants it, she. He gets lower rates and less volatility.
I think you always should emphasize also that it's voluntary.
Right.
That no one's going to be forced to do this if they don't want to.
Yep.
That it's, it's their choice.
Can always opt out.
And I can send out again, Allison mentioned it, the, the notes, because it was kind of that very high level when I met with the city of Manchester, with the gang, kind of going over the benefits of community power.
Yeah, you edit down to about four paragraphs.
Yeah. So it's just, I'll send that again, just in case that anybody-
I think that's what I lifted directly for the key messages on-
Okay.
-page, whatever that is, too.
It's a, the Portsmouth High School Ecology Club, I think you mentioned that in your, in your manuscript here, too. I think it's really important to get young people involved, because they're probably the most enthusiastic, and, and they have influence over their parents. Okay? Because, you know, if they're gung-ho for something, their parents are going to have a hard time backing them off. So I think, and they are interested in these issues, climate change, and energy efficiency, and nuclear energy, and-
And they go to work? They, they go to work, and they lobby?
Yeah, yeah. So I know they were at the, at the farmer's market a couple of weekends ago. So, yeah.
We should brief them, you know, just get with the club directly and explain all of this and the messages.
You want me to see if I can meet with them? Get a meeting with them in October?
Yeah. I mean, maybe share the communications plan with them, and say, you know, how would, how, how can, would you like to be involved, and how would you like to do that? And then we can kind of channel the energies with the climate action plan as well, right?
Yep. And they have a new leader there. Kim McGoody left, but they have a new person.
Tom, you, that's something you wanted to say?
Oh, no. No, I agree. I think it's a great idea.
Yeah. Well, they're, they're very energetic, you know, when they, when they get behind something. We've seen them-
And I think we have the opportunity to, discussing community power, but as the communications unfold over the months, maybe talk a little bit more about the coalition, you know, kind of very high level about what the, the community coalition is, and then a little more detail, a little more detail, to start to make that transition-
Right.
-from generic community power to a very tangible entity in the, in the coalition.
Right.
You know, that's going to have a CEO, and, you know, funding, and donors and stuff.
Well, here's another idea that I ran, I ran into us in another organization where we had our monthly meeting, and I just mentioned this, the power community idea and so forth. And it was kind of, more or less silence, until after the meeting, somebody came up to me and said, "What is this all about?" Now, this is a local organization here in Portsmouth, right? So what I'm thinking is, we all might belong to various civic groups in town. And it would be an opportunity to say to whoever runs the organization, you know, "Would you give me five minutes at one of your next meetings to talk to people about this? If you're a member anyway of the organization, it's no big deal, and, and it's something new that they might be willing to accommodate." And that's another way of person-to-person communications from somebody who is one of your members in your group, you know? So it's worth looking, considering how many organizations you might belong in, that, that might be willing to, you know, Lions Club, the Kiwanis, whatever.
Rotary.
Rover, Rotary, yeah. So all those groups.
Yeah.
One of the reasons I was asking about the logo is that I can easily start a little block in the city newsletter twice a week that has the logo, so that people are seeing that with a slightly different message-
Nice.
-rotating through all four messages. And then by the time we do all of this, this grassroots, literally, building through October and November, then when we do a community survey, they, hopefully, these, these basic four messages have been percolating enough that people can feel informed enough to participate in a survey. Then you have a baseline for when we do the next phase of the specific coalition stuff.
Right.
And it builds on itself.
I'd love it if we, if we did that in the newsletter regularly. And if that were pushed out, that logo and that little update were pushed out on social as well, that'd be very powerful.
One goes hand in hand. If it's in the newsletter, it goes on social.
Exactly. Looking into November, we have our event with Rye on New Hampshire Saves. I think we just take some airtime at that.
And have those, those water bill flyers.
Yeah, and have the flyers.
Which will benefit them as well, because they're the same key messages.
Great. And-
It's been a bit with those, so there might be even some refreshing to those, you know, to the water bill flyer. You know, I have to look at it.
So we have to take the, all that information about 3S art space off and the date of that.
Yeah, maybe, I think there's another meeting of the SCORP on the 13th of October.
Yep.
We, if we can update, make any edits then, by then, or finalize them on that date, then I can get them printed in time for-
Do you need the file from Becca?
No, I have it.
Okay.
Because we ended up sharing it to-
Yes, I remember that.
Could you send that back around, just to be edited?
Sure.
Great, thanks.
Is there a small business community organization in the city that might be on default service and not be with competitive supply, that has a monthly luncheon, or is there, is there any sort of organization in the city?
There's not. I mean, there's the Chamber.
The Chamber is 80% small businesses in Portsmouth, and they have a variety of social, business networking kinds of events.
Seems like an organization that would be helpful to get in front of.
What do you think the best way into the Chamber is, Stephanie?
Just talk to Ben directly, I think.
Yeah.
A briefing, kind of like the Echo Club, that give whoever he thinks should be, should be there to hear the message in a small meeting at their conference room, and explain what it is that this is all about, and ask him what would be the best venues.
Okay.
And Henry, you, we have like, like boilerplate presentations, right, that could be used, that we could doctor-
Yes.
And make it Portsmouth feel to it, but has all the key messages.
Yeah, there's sort of like a coalition two-pager. There's a short two-pager customizable template for any, any community. There's slide deck visual materials. So I can maybe try to put a little package together to email out, because it's, it is a little disparate.
Yeah, yeah.
So, anybody have a good connection with Ben Van Camp? You do?
Yeah, I'm happy to contact Ben.
Great.
We can tag-team him. I'm happy to help you.
Okay.
Or you're perfectly capable of doing it.
No, no, I'm, I'm happy to, and I'll, I want to bring Counselor Bagley into the loop, because he's the council rep for the chamber, so I just want to make sure he's aware of it.
That'd be good. Yeah, yeah. And, you know, let's ask Ben, we'll brief you, but how do we get it out to the membership?
Okay.
And-
Because one thing to just keep on the, you know, side poster board, the Chamber does specialized e-blasts on a, the basic rule is, any nonprofit can get an exclusive email messaging once a year, but they're flexible. And I think Ben would be recommending that as one of the first things he could do, just do a simple e-blast that explains what this is all about, what community power is.
Well, until probably mid-next year, the coalition's in nonprofits.
Yeah, so, and it's, I don't know exactly what the rules-
But the city is, too.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Very much so.
Yes. No, I think the city is the operative entity.
Yeah.
That'd be great, if we could target November for that. There's a lot of Chamber gatherings in November, and they have their big event at the Sherrod and every-
Right. Which I think my art message would be diluted unless we have a string of holiday lights.
People are drinking wine and, and celebrating.
Yeah.
Quick question. So when some of these notices go out, is it accompanied by a contact X for questions or comments? And where does that go?
Wherever you want it to. So you can, you essentially give, and we will design any of our messages to have a call to action, wherever the committee wants it to go.
Okay.
It doesn't have to go back to the Chamber. It comes directly to whomever.
Well, certainly, we want to direct them to the webpage.
Right.
But they can contact me if they want.
Mm-hmm.
I love to talk about community power.
So I could work something up for that October meeting as well, just so we can get it in the rotation, because I'm not sure who else is in the queue for Chamber messaging, but I will find that out.
Okay. That'd be great.
John, I've got to excuse myself, because I got to help set up for the Citywide Neighborhood Committee at the senior center, which I believe you're attending as well.
Yes. It's only 15 minutes away.
I know, but I promised I would help set it up, so.
Good for you. I'll see you there. Take care of you. Thank you, Peter. That's great, if we can bring the Chamber in in November, that builds some awareness. We've got some awareness at the Button Up event. December, we're thinking survey, public hearing, public hearing, right? Isn't that our sequence?
Public hearing in January. The, the note here in December is to start planning it, so that we're ready to send it out. But I, I think by the time of the November meeting of this committee, we'll have enough feedback from the other things we've done to figure out what you want for the community survey, and have that be the main agenda.
Seems like we want to, if we're doing something in the newspaper in October, it would be helpful to kind of, you know, continue to try to repeat that. Maybe not monthly, but at least in December, in advance of the public hearing in January.
Yes.
Have another splash.
While the surveys, before the survey is getting out, yes.
Yeah, that could be another op-ed, for sure.
Yeah, just maybe if we tried to do two of them during the fourth quarter, and have that second one be, you know, reasonably close to whenever we're going to do the public hearing, which maybe is mid-January.
Yeah. And I, we talked last time about, anything we do in December should be early December, because otherwise it gets lost. So the survey is probably the first week of December.
Has to be, yeah. Yeah. Has to be, yeah, yeah.
Right after we have the float and the holiday party.
Yes, absolutely have a float.
With ready, a green Ready Killawatt. Well, he's red and green. So we can pencil in an op-ed about the survey. Allison, you had great survey questions you developed for us last time. Would you like to take this one on? And I think we can look at what we did on Slido in the June event and also what Keen did, remember way back when we did our discovery process and learned about Keen's survey? I thought that was an effective one. I did talk to the city manager and say, you know, it'd be really nice to get broad coverage for the energy survey in December. Would you consider mailing and, even though that costs some money? And she's willing to consider that, so. She said, there's money. We could find money. So I take her at her word on that. But Peter Rice may, Peter Rice is, he's tighter than, he's really tight.
It's because everything's in the DPW budget.
Right.
That's where they find it.
So we've had really good results with QR codes lately. I think we talked about that before. So I think there are always people in the community who don't have internet access, so there's always a paper component. But I think you probably want most of your survey being done through Survey Monkey or MailChimp or, you know, online so that we aren't sitting there with piles of paper tabulating.
Right, no. I think the appropriate method would be postcard with a QR code and a description of the survey. And yes, there are the Harold White Houses of the world who don't have email. And we have to think about them and have some plan. But I think where I come from on the survey is, the more people who get a postcard and engage with it, the more people who are then really on the edge of their seat saying, what happens next with this?
Because they want to hear the results.
We could always include a phone number for someone to call that if they're uncomfortable completing a survey online and you'd like a paper copy, you can call this number.
Or we can leave them at the library. I mean, we find that those who aren't online are in City Hall or at the library.
Right.
Or at the Senior Center frequently. So if we have copies of it there, those three places, that's helpful. With a poster version of the postcards so people know where to look for it.
Yes.
Yeah, or the phone number. The phone number is work, you know. And in the McIntyre survey, those went to city manager's assistance. And that was a busy couple of days. But I like the library option.
And the Senior Center.
Yeah, the Senior Center's great.
Yeah.
And just the fact of doing the survey, I mean, you're only going to get so many people completing them and you're going to get some information out of that. But just the marketing around the fact that you're doing a survey itself is a, gets the word out.
Right.
And the concept of community power just gets in folks' heads, even if they don't participate in completing the survey.
Right, very true.
Right. And you get a, you know, before taking their survey, you get a couple of paragraphs of context, which, you know, you got a really engaged person at that moment who may have ignored all the buzz around them and then said, but now I want to read this because I want to do the survey. So that gets us into December. And then January, we start having public hearings. So I take it, Stephanie, you're saying, let's have a community forum prior to the public hearing? Is that the concept?
I think that's what we discussed.
Yeah. I think so, yeah. We were saying, let's...
And inform and then give people a chance to opine at city council meeting.
You're right, because the more, the more we take care of the back and forth and tug and pull at that forum, the smoother the council meeting hearing would be. I like that.
Good. And there's probably some form of communication after that first hearing, based upon what comes out of it, that we would do something in February, in advance of the second public hearing?
Yes.
You know, is there any learnings that came out of the first one?
For sure. And whatever is the latest news from the Coalition, that it becomes, that's the dual message. And I put a press release and calendar listings and things like that in the tools column, but it really is in the messaging column as well. So I think a press release every month, just to keep people updated about the results of our most recent effort and what's coming and what's going on with the Coalition. All three of those are news. We're not just saying the same thing.
Yeah. And I was also going to do council updates under my name on the agenda. I was going to do one the 23rd is our second meeting of October.
I mean, and once they know the price for the communities, they're going live in Phase 1, assuming they're all using the same option, rate options. I mean, it'd be a great piece of news to send out that here's what the rate is for Lebanon compared to what they're paying in Liberty Default Service right now in the city of Lebanon. I mean, and it starts to become real that these folks are going live in April and going to be paying 18 cents instead of 22 cents.
From a Coalition sort of message calendar point of view, right in line with this, October is hopefully announcing the successful approval of contracts with a number of the vendors. December, ever source price to beat will be known. So here's whatever sources rates are. Community power is coming and maybe we can beat it. February, maybe the Coalition's price starts to get known. So February is, look, we actually have the concrete numbers. And then the commencement of services, March, for that first wave of communities. So that's kind of the message calendar there that may fit in with some of what Portsmouth is communicating.
Do we have any visibility into when we would know menu options? Or will those be non-standard?
That would potentially be as soon as February, maybe March.
Okay.
In that it may not be perfectly standard across the members, but I think it will be pretty consistent for this first wave. We don't know yet.
And the one firm that they hired, Ascend Analytics, they're one of, within the scope of their contract, is rate setting. So they'll be working with the Coalition to help set rates with the various communities. And they've talked about keeping it consistent or simple across communities, at least for go-live, as opposed to the eight communities having, you know, all these different permutations of rates.
Yeah, I mean, if we could take the survey results and say, this is what you said you were interested in buying. And then 30 days later, say, these are the menu options we envision in response to that.
Yeah. And here's an actual example of the eight towns that are going live in April in terms of what their offerings are.
Right.
And we envision something similar.
Yeah, yeah. So that timing is, would appear to work well. But things can change, as we know. Well, that takes us up through January. I'm willing to plan February, March, and April a little later than September. I don't know about you guys, but...
Yeah, I mean, that timeframe's all going to be about the hearings and finalizing our EAP and getting the EAP in front of the, approved by the council.
Right.
And I would assume we'd be able, whatever we file with the PUC at that point, we could make available to the public in this city to, if you're having trouble sleeping at night here and you want to read our EAP.
I think we have everything to date on the webpage. And we've got, as the councilors know, we have an exhaustive encyclopedia of information on the website, which prompts our residents to always say they can never find what they're looking for.
Yeah.
We do try to make it easy.
So EAP submitted to City Council in March is our current timeline.
Yeah, and then that's what I put into the latest, I rev'd this thing.
Thank you, yes. Yeah, that's what I have here.
And tried to kind of line it up with where we are.
Right.
And, yeah, so it was EAP approved by the council in March. And then to the PUC, you know, maybe in March, but I put April.
Right. You are a keeper of our timeline. And the only one who knows how to put these checks in the little boxes.
And also, as part of this, there's a technical review, I think, too, Henry, of our EAP, right, by the Coalition.
Yep. And generally, if there's not much deviation from the template, that's pretty quick and easy, so, but yes.
Right, so we put it, it gets two approvals in March.
Well, it's...
You and the council.
It's sort of an informal check, you're good to go, from the Coalition.
Right.
And then I guess technically, it's an adoption by the council and then an approval by the Public Utility Commission.
Yeah. So I'll just recap some of the things we've been hearing tonight. Next up in October, I'm going to see if we can get an article in SMG. And also, I'm on tap for an op-ed. Then...
I thought that was in December, no?
The op-ed's in, the second one in December. Some kind of, well, I think Stephanie's got an interview on the importance of PCP. And we talked about the key messaging in that. Local empowerment, lower cost, greener energy, less volatility. And then we have November, oh, I'm sorry. We were going to reach out to the Ego Club in October. I can do that.
And I'm going to start putting it in the newsletter.
Start putting it in, with a logo.
Yeah, I think some of our action items are get going on that logo. So we'll follow up with sort of process on getting input into what that would be. And then the other thing is sort of message packet documentation of here's what the existing messages and materials the Coalition has to send that out.
November, we've got the Button Up event. We'll take some airtime there. We'll have the flyers from the water bill as our messaging. And Kate, you were going to talk to the Chamber and Ben around something in November? Henry, if there's any kind of regional gathering, it's brewing?
Keep you posted.
As we come down the stretch into Q4?
And maybe just on that, is there a general sense from this group of what would be useful in terms of, like, do you want to network with the other towns? Or do you want to sit down and have a, you know, discussion about regional public engagement, coordination, a little more structured, a mix? This might not be the perfect time to really flesh that out, but I guess I'm curious what first thoughts would be. We can maybe come back with a more firm proposal.
Like lessons learned.
Lessons learned.
I think that's important to know.
And just hearing what each other are doing for outreach. I mean, Henry, you were talking about sharing some of this with other communities, but for us to let our colleagues know what we have planned and hear what they have planned, it becomes collaborative instead of operating in silos.
Yeah, it's more brainstorming.
I was going to say aligning our messaging, because none of this communication stops at the city border. But I think the messaging is pretty generic, but it would be good to make sure that we're, our messaging is reasonably in sync.
Right.
Because, you know, whatever you're putting into the newspaper is going to be read in Rye, right?
Yeah, yeah.
And in the sense, Exeter's going to be first, just the same.
Exeter and Rye.
Same paper, yeah. I mean, Exeter's going to be kind of a big customer.
Yes, so consistency.
Would you ever want to do a joint op-ed with other community leaders in other towns? To show that this is not just a local thing, but it's a, that there's a lot of different communities that are behind it, just to be more explicit?
Who, if we could get one of our partners in another town to draft it.
Good topic for that regional meeting.
Yeah.
Yeah. I'm happy, I have a friend on the Select Board in Exeter. So I'm willing to ask Julie Gilman if she knows who...
She'd be great. She's on the Coalition Board, isn't she?
Exactly. So, and she was one of my neighbors, so.
Yeah.
Baby, her kids babysat my kids, so we know each other pretty well.
Just as a channel too, might be nice. Like if we were to, someone were to interview you, John, you know, with some series of eight canned questions or whatever, videotaped. And then we have the capability to do a videotaped, like, Q&amp;A with someone and then...
We could figure that out, I think.
Yeah, we definitely could do that.
And then link it to the website or whatever.
We have a couple people here who are good at videos.
And community radio. I'm sure Larry and...
Oh, sure, yeah.
Peter Swife would be happy to interview you.
Yes.
You're not bashful.
You're in the wrong position as city councilor.
That's right. None of us can do this and be shrinking viola. No, December, Allison, you're going to be our survey drafter?
Yep.
I'll, we'll get those out as soon as I get it.
Okay, no rush. And we talked about publicizing the survey with an op-ed. And I'm happy to do that. The survey's coming to you in your mailbox, if that's how we end up doing it. And if we can do a postcard with a QR code, I think that gives us massive response. It, let's put it this way. Everybody gets a chance to participate, as opposed to people saying, nobody told me about it.
Which they'll still say.
Which they'll still say.
Tell them all the ways we've had it out there.
Right. Hard copy at the library. And that takes us into our first, well, we have a community power forum in January prior to the public hearing. And then we're into the creation of the final EAP.
Would the public hearing be right here? Is that typically the way it works?
It'd be part of a council meeting. So, that's great. Thank you all.
And just before, I sent out the RFP, we're going out to a search firm for CEO. But if any of you in your networks are familiar with anybody who's, you think would be a wonderful candidate, ultimately, they'll have to get funneled through the search firm that we hire. But there's, we're, as the Coalition is going to start to get the job description out into various networks that people have to try to stir up some interest. And, you know, we'll have to, again, funnel them through the search firm to, you know, pay the, ultimately, the search fee and everything. But just wanted to mention that if you're looking at it in your, in your networks, if you know people that are, you think would be, you know, good at this.
I is it's too bad April Salas lives half the year in New Orleans. I always liked her.
Definitely has qualifications. But, yeah, so...
Great.
The Coalition definitely needs a CEO in place because it's, you know, it's run by the the board and the, you know, through Clifton and others. It's we're at a point now where it'll be really helpful to get a leader in the organization.
Yes, and any of us who've been on a board and the board has had to step in and run day to day knows that that can only go so long.
Yeah, so it's exciting that we're at that point now.
Getting that out today was a good milestone.
Yeah, thank you for your help.
Yeah.
Okay, we'll see everybody the 13th of October.
Recording stopped.
Thank you. Kate, that's very helpful. Thank you.
Yeah, this is a nice craft course.
So do you want to do, like, joint?